I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. This first meeting in June is always a joyous meeting for us because we get to meet some really talented children, and I believe that's what we're going to do this evening. Dr. Maestas.
Tonight, we are honored to have students from throughout the district that are here. They are here tonight because their artwork was chosen to be displayed at our office, which is now on 11 Lincoln Street, and I know some of you had the opportunity to go through our office and see your child's artwork, and I'll tell you that our staff is a little bit sad because when the artwork comes down, it needs more, so we need your kids to create more artwork for us. But I'll tell you, we had a group that came through our office about two or three weeks ago, and they met with Mr. Capel and I, and they are from an art organization here in Plymouth, and they were so impressed with the quality of work, and this is the work of your children. They are professional artists, and they were just so impressed with the kind of work that's being produced, and I hope that our students realize that this honor tonight is, it's a reflection of the work that they've done in our school system, and we hope that they can continue to do more as they work through the system. So, tonight, we have a certificate for them. Ms. Hunt and I will be, I'll announce her name, we'll give them a certificate, and this is being televised, and it also is recorded, so you can watch it over and over and over and over, and you can forward it to all your relatives around the world, and you can embarrass them as much as you want, all right? So, let's do the names. Thank you. All right, we're going to start with Plymouth North High School Alexis Core. Maxwell Espinoza. Caroline Egan. Amelia Melton. Shay Polikakis. Kobe Roseme. Henry White. Hannah Metaford. Caitlin Maloney. Aiden Brady. Zachary Johnson. Emma Blakeman. Taylor Gendron. Olivia McMenon McKinnon. Kaylee Elger. John Driscoll Plymouth Community Intermediate School. Jandrew LeBe. Ava Shepherd. Molly Lutz. Gabriella Whitting. Emerson Spinalli. Stella McCabe. Eliza Silva. Brooke Shicoloni. Sophia Lyons Federal Furnace Elementary. Cecilia Driscoll. Clara Marx. Mason Hutchinson South Elementary. Charlotte Fenland. Brooke Costa. South Elementary Lila Davies. Cameron Sherwood West Elementary. Lily Miller. Gwendolyn Henke from West Elementary. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School Brianna Fine. Caroline Fitzgibbons. Iliana Rains Nathaniel Morton. Madsen Quirpul. Quirpul. Shay Donnelly. Hannah Kohury from Nathaniel Morton. Corey. See, we got to teach our kids to speak up, right? Hedge Elementary Sophia Michael. Gabrielle Richard from Cold Spring. Allison Quinlan. Nora Kelsey Indian Brook. Olivia Hayes Indian Brook. Patrick Duffy. Aiden McDonald. Jacob Parks. Catherine Thurston. Bradley Sewell Manomet Elementary. Soul. Robert Dunn. Lily Bartholomew. Shayla Donavellus. Maya Vosi Manomet. Samuel Dunn. Ethan Lindholm Hedge Elementary. Megan Frymouth. And Andrew Laserta West Elementary. And that is it for our awards. I want to thank you all for coming, and I really am appreciative that you're here to honor them and continue to urge your children to become part of our visual and performing arts. We hope that they will grow through the years and really do great things, and we can highlight the work as the years go forward. So, thank you so much for coming. We are honored to have you, honored to celebrate them. Thank you, everybody.
So, Lee.
I don't know. It's so sweet.
Oh, yeah, dance.
And maybe, and maybe, maybe it might be generational.
You gotta get an arm under.
I would love that.
She sings now.
I would, I would.
Sound like a mother.
Yeah, right, right.
She talks like a baby, too.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, I'm seeing the.
Her mom's a nightmare. Oh, you're welcome. It's fun.
Yeah, really, yeah, you shouldn't be eating after. Oh, you didn't touch the kids.
Oh, no.
You didn't shake any, you didn't shake any.
A couple I tried, and then I gave up. Molly.
Always nice to see a packed house for a minute.
I was told to wash my hands.
That's right. You need some?
You can.
No, not today.
I know, I know.
You can lift your chair up if you want. You can lift your chair up if you want.
You don't have to. Are you comfortable?
Or just swap it with the chair next to you. Okay, good, it's fine. I don't, I just don't want you to feel, you know.
Okay. That was excellent. Thank you, Dr. Maestas. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Is there anybody?
He's not going to say anything because he's.
All right, let's move on to our student representatives, and we will start with South.
Graphic design and visual communication students just returned from the MOOF Film Festival, and Plymouth South had a great day. They won awards in the following.
Abigail, can you put that microphone closer?
Oh, yeah.
Pull that mic closer to you, please.
It's just loud outside.
More than that.
I think it's a little loud.
Okay. So, first place in the sports category was Miles LaGro, and second place in the documentary category was Sean Sanjanuit. Third place was PSA slash, PSA slash commercial again was Miles LaGro. And to top it all off, the prestigious Roger J. Robitaille Memorial Award for the Best Score at the Film Festival went to Miles LaGro for his sports video. As you know, graduation took place on Saturday for the first time at the stadium outdoors since 2003. We are pleased that over 260 graduates received their diplomas, and we thank all of those who were involved in the ceremony. Senior scholarship night was another successful night, raising, giving out over $143,000 in awards to the class of 2019. Thank you all for the local scholarship donors and your generosity. The annual freshman academy awards took place this morning. Over 30 students received recognition in both academic and tech studies, achievement along with their special leadership and dedication awards. We have a Division III state champion with Indiscus. Congratulations to Nick Ziole. It's been another successful sports season. Congratulations to softball, baseball, boys and girls tennis, and boys lacrosse for qualifying for the state tournament. Both softball and girls track are Patriot League champions. Project Lead the Way Biomedical and, of course, testing finishes up this week. Biology MCAS begins tomorrow for our freshmen. Term three honor roll students will be recognized on Thursday with an ice cream social. This year's guest speaker is a recent graduate Jared Sullivan. This is for students who we are, this is for students only as we are recognizing them approximately, I don't even know what that sentence says, but there are 500 students who will be recognized for honors throughout grades nine to 11. The VPA CHIM induction ceremony will take place in June 11th at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. The underclassmen awards night will take place June 11th at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. That's, okay. Also, final exams begin June 11th with makeup exams on June 17th. And finally, thank you to our retiring teachers for their lasting impression at PSHS. Culinary, we have Barry Levy, Cosmetology Shelley Myers, Marketing Doris Grant, Graphics Wendy Civic, and Health Teresa Dore.
Thank you very much. And now, North.
Congratulations to our seniors who are honored at the academic convocation held on Thursday, May 30th. 125 seniors were invited and received excellence awards, performance awards, and/or service awards. Students at North received over 157,000 in scholarship awards. We are very thankful to those families and businesses that provide, provide these amazing awards. The Salutatorian Award for the class of 2019 was Emily Jane Kelly, and the Valedictorian Award of the class of 2019 was Joanna Keller-Herhove. Congratulations to both of these students for attaining their, the highest GPA. Both North High School graduated 307 students on Saturday, June 1st. Over 3,000 family members and guests were in attendance to support the graduates. Of the graduating class, 78% will be attending either a two- or four-year college, 5% to the military, four to a technical certificate, or preparatory program, and 13% into the workforce. We would like to wish all of our graduates success in their future endeavors. Meet the coaches, coaches slash clearance night is Monday, June 10th at 6:00 PM. All grades will meet in the PNHS auditorium. Students interested in participating in fall 2019 sport at both North should attend with a parent or guardian. Fall cheer trials will take place on Tuesday, June 4th, Thursday, June 6th, and Friday, June 7th from 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM in the PNHS Gymnasium. All students interested in joining should attend the trials. Fall dance trials take place on Monday, June 3rd and Wednesday, June 5th from 3:30 to 5:30 PM in the PNHS Gymnasium. All students interested in joining should attend trials. Final exams will begin on Tuesday, June 11th. Tuesday, June 11th and Wednesday, June 12th will be full day at school. Thursday, June 13th, Friday, June 14th, and Monday, June 17th are all early release days at 11:05. The last day of school is Monday, June 17th. The last date for late buses will be Thursday, June 6th. Take advantage of the reduced transportation rate. Please have your application and payment into PNHS main office before Friday, June 22nd. Transportation and applications must be turned in for all students regardless of travel mode. The last day of food services will be offering breakfast will be June 14th, and the last day for lunch will be Wednesday, June 12th. Biology MCAS will be held on Tuesday, June 4th and Wednesday, June 5th.
Okay, thank you both for your report this evening. We have a program update, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, tonight, we have our visual and performing arts coordinator, Mike Capel. He's here tonight to provide an update to the committee on the happening, happenings of the visual and performing arts program. Mr. Capel, welcome to school committee.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me again. It's been a couple of years. I've missed you. Just doing the update. So, it's been a very busy couple of years. Just kind of want to highlight a few things, kind of give a recall of what we've done, where we've been, and then a little bit of a discussion on where we want to go. Believe it or not, this is my eighth year in the district. It seems like eight minutes some days. So, this, the year obviously started out with a large performance, the This Is Me performance earlier this year to start out the year. It was a, it was a monumental undertaking with great staff, students, technical people putting this all together. It was, it was, it was a, it was kind of a big deal. It was kind of a big deal. It caught a lot of, it was seen a lot on social media, and we're rather proud of it, but that was probably one of definitely the highest points of the year was one of the first days. Before I get into kind of going over some highlights of the last couple of years, just, I, we kind of live by this. We don't kind of live by this. We live by this, our mission, if you will, our unofficial mission. We believe the arts are for everyone, that everyone should have access to a world-class arts education, no matter what school they go to, what part of town they're from. My job is trying to even the playing field and give all kids equal opportunity, so we try to do that. We think it's a fundamental right to be able to do that. We also believe it's a fundamental skill that anyone can learn. Yes, you all up there could learn to be Picasso or Pavarotti or whoever. It is like, can you all, can everybody in the audience read and write? Yes, I would say yes. If you can learn to read and write, you can learn to draw, you can learn to sing. It's just a skill like anything else. It's really true. It's not like a gift from the heavens. It takes hard work, dedication, and good teachers to scaffold those skills up, so we believe highly in that. The other thing we try to do is all that learning that happens in those, in those classrooms need to get out of the classrooms. They need to be, the learning needs to be exposed. The community needs to see the skills and the value that the kids learn, and the kids need to give back and connect to the community, so that's a big one for us. And then, we strive, and sometimes we take a few steps forward, and sometimes we need to continue to take steps forward, but we want to build a comprehensive arts program that can be for everyone and also can set kids up for success to study beyond 12th grade, but they have a foundation from the Plymouth Public Schools and they have that opportunity. So, that's just a reminder of where we are and how we kind of guide our daily practice. I just, I like, I'm a photographer. I like pictures. I'm going to go through some highlights. Dr. Maestas mentioned it earlier, but on the right is new central office, and the artwork that we just gave certificates for was on display for the last few months. It is a beautiful space. The artwork looks, it's the same quality artwork, but somehow it looks better in this space. It's absolutely beautiful. Quick note on the left, we had a great collaboration. We've done collaborations before with the Center for Active Living, but this is another one where we had a project from an art two class taught, the same class, the same project was taught in an art two class and through the senior center. They had a mid-progress critique, so that after they got through planning and some ideas, they met over, the kids went over to the center and had a conversation with the adults in that class. That was absolutely wonderful. They finished the project, and then the projects were on display at the Plymouth North Art Show at the end of the year a few weeks ago. So, it was a nice collaboration between high school students, teachers, and the Center for Active Living. Pretty happy about that. Empty bowls on the right, we'll talk more about that. Just a great community event, people coming out and throwing clay, and that doesn't mean throwing against the wall, but spinning it on the wheel, as it were. Peter Pan was kind of a good show this year. Some technical challenges of flying human beings. I'm not sure who signed that contract. What? But everything went perfectly to plan. It was, it was absolutely a great show. And then, professional development last year, since my last update, but it was last year we brought two artists in from Plymouth College of Art in Plymouth, UK, and they did professional development for all of the art teachers, as well as the banner students spent a day with these artists from the Plymouth College of Art, and that's just Mike getting dirty and making art again, which was weird, but fun. Just some samples of artwork, and I just, I love these two. They were in the same show, and two different points of view. Katie Wynott on the left, another student on the right, just different points of view and looking at the world in a different way, and one thing that the art teachers do at the higher levels, excuse me, the older grades, is really try to teach kids point of view and finding their own point of view, not regurgitating somebody else's point of view, and I think that amplified that a little bit. Indoor percussion in Winter Guard was a great season. Indoor percussion won their NSBA division championship. They came in first place in that. That was a bit of a change to a more concert style instead of a marching style, where the music is more difficult, but there's not as much movement, and they did very, very well. They rose to the challenge. I love the photograph on the left, summer last year, we did, we work all year round. I don't know, just everybody, we work all year round, all the teachers, the kids. We had an opportunity from Ben Bramhall. Thank him very much. He contacted us and said, "I'd like to do two summer coffee houses." That space, that iconic space in Plymouth with young people going in with a guitar over his back, we had two great evenings of music, two summer nights last year. And just some high-end work on the right, ceramics work from Plymouth South High School. Absolutely fabulous work. And of course, is the England connection in Plymouth 400. On the right was almost two years ago now, the PIC, which that was the second time. We're about to go for the third time, July 4th, where that's a group of 30 middle school students that go over to Plymouth, and they were at Stonehenge. And then, just in April, that's Northern Lights with the past Lord Mayor. There is actually a new Lord Mayor in Plymouth that the new kids will get to meet, but had a great visit to Plymouth for a few days. Taught students, ran workshops, so the kids ran workshops, three days of workshops with young people, taught them a bit about a cappella, music theory, how to beatbox, how to come up with different chords, improvise. It was, it was a fabulous three days of workshops. They put on a concert and made connections. They made real connections, and it was a terrible departure when they had to leave. Very, very dramatic. I'm sure you can't imagine that at all. And this is probably one of my highlights of the year. This was All Town. This is my eighth year. We've done All Town different every year, a little bit different. We always try to assess where we are and improve, of course. So, this was Choral All Town. Instead of making it something that you auditioned for, all 800 Choral students participated, so that's all 800 students in Plymouth, from grade four to grade 12. We were able to bring in a pretty well-known writer and arranger, Mr. Rob Dietz, that's him. He works for, he does all kinds of things, but pentatonics and the sing-off and all those things. He arranges for all those different high-end a cappella groups. He arranged a song for us, a classic song for us. All the choruses did their own song, but then we came together and 800 kids sang this amazing version of this song, a cappella. It was absolutely fabulous, in my opinion. It was 800 kids. We wanted to include everybody. We wanted to give them a day of workshops, a day of working with each other. The high school kids worked with the younger kids. The high school kids actually conducted a bunch of the elementary choruses. So, the elementary chorus teachers gave, gave up their role and gave it to the high school kids, and the high school kids worked all day with those choruses and conducted those kids. The one problem, when you have 800 kids participating, is you have no room for an audience. This was much more for us about the process and the learning rather than the end product or the prize, if you will. However, we still did come up with a solution. We worked with Ed TV, and were able to live broadcast this on Facebook, multi-camera Facebooked this. Does that, is that a thing? Can I, does that sound right? Multi-camera? Yeah, I guess, well, Facebook or Book of Face, whatever it is. Sorry. And so, the parents were able to see it, and we recorded it, and it was just a great event, and we were really pleased with how that came out. We have, we did a lot of surveys afterwards to the kids. Did a lot of talking with the teachers, of course, but did a lot of surveys to the kids, and the kids responded overwhelmingly that they, that they not only enjoyed the day and the process, but they got a lot more out of it musically. So, again, this is just. So again, this is just kind of what I went over. Forty concerts, 80-plus additional events, and those are some highlights. So as I said, we like to travel. So the PIC is heading back to the U.K. in July for our Plymouth International Chorus Collaboration. That will be a great experience again, a great cultural learning and musical experience. And of course, you know, marching band and the identity banner. We have 99 tickets, 84 kids going to the U.K. in November of 2019. So if that goes well, I suppose I can keep the job for the rest of the year. What I did was a little bit of reflecting. So this is where we were in 2011 and where we are now. This is by no means instant. There was no easy button here. This was years of hard work and persistence by lots of people. Central Office, School Committee, by the teachers, by students, by parents giving feedback, continually talking to the community and seeing where their needs were. But some examples, we had fee-based elementary instrumental program with an average of 270 participants per year. We now have four full-time elementary instrumental teachers and have 450 to 500 young people taking lessons every year. We have a loner library of over 250 instruments. So if a student, it's great that they don't, that it's part of the day and they don't have to pay for lessons, but what if they can't afford to rent or buy an instrument? We have worked over the years, continued to work, taking instruments in. We clean them, we maintain them, we log them, and we loan them out to students in need. They might not get their first choice, but last year, everybody that wanted an instrument got an instrument. It might be their second choice, but we were able to do that and we're pretty proud of that opportunity. In 2011, there was one musical every other year combined between the high schools. So that's, that number 40 is 40 students involved. But I would really say per year, that was approximately, if you divide that in half, 20 to 25 students per year. Now there's a musical every year at each high school with lots of other theater opportunities after school and about 120 students participate in that per year. So about opportunity. Coffee houses, two middle school, four high school coffee houses. We have been able to meet our demand for high school arts courses better than we did back in 2011. 800 sections versus 2,200 sections now. And we, that's still, we don't meet the demand. There's still more requests than we're able to accommodate, but we've made progress. This is something that I was at North and South and there were 40 students. I would, that's pretty accurate, 40 students between both high schools in the Choral Program back in 2011. Like 19 in one and 22 in the other. In the last bunch of years, and again, this isn't just whoever's in the chair, wherever they are right now. This is a lot of different people. Some are not here anymore, but were great contributors to building the program. Now there is about 120 kids in the Chor, in both schools in the Chorus Program, from 40 to an average of 120 kids participating, taking those classes. After-school opportunities, five a cappella groups in the district. We've really worked on arts integration with elementary and middle school classes, not just crafting in the class, but what is arts integration? And we can get into that more if we want to. The Strings Program, there was a Strings Program before. It has grown. There is now a very, very strong middle schools program. The high school program is continuing to build. We are working at the secondary level, both middle school and high school. In the Spring Concert, all four of them had put an orchestra together, a true orchestra. So that was winds and strings for at least one song. And that is very difficult to do. It's like reading different languages and different staffs. So it's great when you can actually put a professional sounding orchestra together. Kindergarten Art Music, Empty Bowls, about $15,000 in five years. We've raised for the South Shore Community Action Council through that. This year was, just got the number back officially. I thought it was 5,500. We posted that right afterwards, but more money has come in and it's after our very small expenses. It was 6,411 dollars that we donated this year to South Shore Community Action Council and the food program. So raising awareness through community service and art-making. Art in the Community Course at both high schools have done tremendous work around the town, with the town of Plymouth, with the hospital, with other nonprofits in the area. Tidmarsh Farms, for instance, working with community partners to do public artwork. And again, getting that work and skill and valuable experience out. U.K. Partnership, so the 180, as of November, I'm cheating a little bit, this isn't current, but as of November, there'll be 180 students that have traveled to the U.K. through the Visual and Performing Arts and our partnership with the 400 in the U.K. And 400, that number is homegrown. So that, maybe not everybody traveled, but those are the larger courses that we're able to do at home. And cost, I could not be happier about the cost of these trips. Northern Lights, they did so much fundraising. $500, I think it ended up costing the student to travel for a week. The PIC that's going in July, they are paying $1,000 for one week. The flight in July was $1,150, so they're paying less than the cost of a flight to go over there. And that's because of our partners over there and that's because of the tremendous support from our community and the fundraising efforts that we put in. So that's a little bit about where we were and again, where we are now. But you know, the question is, so now what? I don't think it's a matter of resting on our laurels of where we are. I want to say, I don't mean to say that I think we need, we're at a pretty good capacity with our staffing and our students and not making people go insane. So it's a balance there. But how can we get better at what we do? Can we change what we do to improve it? How do we get every student to learn in the arts, in and through the arts? So I want to really continue to engage a community of stakeholders and that would be Central Office, obviously, School Committee, parents, students, other community partners. And continuing to ask the question is, how can we better serve our students? And how can we better connect to the community? So that is something we want to continually reflect on and continually improve upon. Don't forget, if you're watching at home, there's summer camp opportunities. If you go to the website, you can sign up right now for a whole host of summer camp opportunities at a very affordable price. So if you were going to ask me, and I think we need to continue to have a conversation, but if you were going to ask me, here's some things that I want to continue on and maybe move towards. And again, this isn't, this is just my putting out on the table here. I think we need to continue to work with our arts integration and continue that. I think when students are engaged and they can see the result of their learning and they work in problem-based group work, the learning is more authentic, it's more visible and more understanding to the student. They understand why they do, why they are doing what they're asked to be doing. Of course, continue to see through the Plymouth, U.K. Partnership with both the PIC and Identity Banner and follow those roads where they may go. I'm very interested in this idea, a middle school arts pathway, possibly for grades five through eight. I would love to put a group together to think about that, to have conversations and start a conversation about that and to see what that might look like. So throwing that out on the table. Continue to develop program music technology. We've developed the second, last time I met with you, we had one music technology piece. Now we have two music technology courses at the high school. Music and Theater Tech. It is a real industry and kids are very interested in it. We want to continue to work and see how we can meet the demand, the course request at the high school. And I would love to see in the future, at some point, high school theater during the day program and add a high school theater teacher. Most, 99% of the theater we do is all out of school. And it's great and it works, but I think we can do a better job connecting with more kids and giving more kids an opportunity if we were able to offer courses at the high school level. So those are not off the cuff. Those are well-thought-out. Thoughts on me? And we did it. We're to the end. And anybody have any questions or comments?
Questions, comments, observations. Ms. Hunt?
I know you said that you're, as far as capacity and all that, and this might not be a question that has an answer. And I know you just talked about all your summer programs. And I remember last summer, the music groups were in such demand that you just couldn't, you know, it was really hard because the public wanted, you know, the music groups to come and perform. I mean, I know that you worked a lot last summer with that. So how do you feel? Like, do you feel still that that's overwhelming with the demand? Because our music groups or our a cappella groups are so great that all the community organizations want them at their events during the summer when the kids aren't there? Like, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I have, yes. I don't know if I have a complete answer to your question. But it is difficult. You know, kids go away in the summer. Groups break up. When we run our groups, they start, sometimes they'll start in the summer. You know, there'll be a cram week in August to start to learn music. But they're not, every year's a new group. You know, South Avenue, Girl Treble, Jazz Bands, they're all different groups every year. And they, it goes in cycles and it takes time to learn. And we want to, I'll say this, we want to find and connect with the community in the most valuable places we can. And I think sometimes that's a conversation. It's a conversation that I have with Gary all the time. It's a conversation I have with the music teachers all the time. What is the most valuable experience for our students without burning them out? Because, I mean, quite honestly, they're not...
And you guys, too.
Yes, yeah, sure, thanks. But they're not, I, it's a weird contradiction that I'm going to say right now. We want to connect with the community and do as much as we can, but we also have to guard against over-saturation, over-use of our students. And it needs to be a quality learning opportunity for our kids. And so that, there's no easy answer to that. And summer is very difficult. Summer vacations are difficult.
Other questions, comments? Go ahead. Three totally separate, but I'm going to mention them all. I was very pleased to hear what you said about everyone who wanted to have an instrument, whether their financial, their family finances could afford it or not. We managed that to happen. And I also know that we're, a lot of our students who are families are struggling financially are getting to go on these trips. And they're getting sponsored and the money is there and that's such, we love to hear that. So that's excellent. Certainly want to keep that up. The, this is a person, this is totally personal and it's one of those questions like Ms. Hunt just asked you. You probably can't do anything about, but you mentioned the opening day of the school as one of the highlights of the year. You mentioned the 800-student chorus. I remember a few years ago, Les Mis, when we were able to pull together students from our different schools, we really can create something that is beyond us in size. And I know that's really difficult to do, but my personal hope someday would be to see a performance where our high schools and our middle schools come together in the same performance.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I think it's finding those opportunities where they come up or where we create them. It definitely adds a lot of layers in there when you're dealing with multiple schools and multiple age levels and all of that. Not to say that it's not worth it because, you know, opening day we had...
Look what we've done.
Grades five through 12 in that performance and it was amazing. At some point, I think it's, it's a lot of people's job, but it's my job to find those opportunities when they make sense because I'm also cautious of the burnout of the teachers. And not pushing, they work very hard. They work tremendously hard. It's like getting blood out of a stone. And they're just amazing. And at some point, we have to have time to reflect and make sure that we're picking those opportunities at the right time.
I thoroughly understand that. Putting, doing something with four schools involved is a lot of work beyond the regular day.
And it's fine and we do it and we love it and we'll continue to do it. And I really appreciate what you said and I agree with you. It's nice when those do come along. But sometimes I don't like to encourage that man and his opening day ideas.
And the last one I was going to mention, you mentioned on your future vision. I want to tell you that, as you may or may not know, I've mentioned this before, my youngest son's a pretty successful composer now out in L.A. And I'm going to tell you that most of his day is spent in music, technology, and math. That those two come together and spends most of the day doing that. And I really think in your future vision, future technology and musical math are really key.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, it's a big part of the program and life and how do you combine those things? How do you combine, you know, playing a cello with, you know, technology? And there's this, and I'm not going to remember the person's name, but there's this amazing cellist that I heard on NPR who was combining these classical cello pieces or parts of pieces with hip-hop and rap. And it was beautiful and energetic and just out there and just absolutely brilliant. So he had the classic cello and all the technology.
Really is the future of music.
Oh, absolutely. It already is.
The joining of the contemporary with the classic and the joining of the music is amazing, what I hear.
Yep, absolutely.
I passed that along to you. It's really...
Well, thank you very much.
Really exciting. I did see a hand, Ms. Burgess.
I just wanted to say, this is going back a little bit, but I was surprised that under where we were in 2011, that you had strings. I didn't even know we had much for strings then.
So we did, elementary only. There wasn't strings in middle school and certainly not in high school at that point. I know there's been a history in Plymouth where that has happened before. So I don't mean to say, you know, we touched the moon first by any means. But there was, there was strings. We had, so those music teachers, elementary music teachers that we contracted with, you could take lessons in fourth or fifth grade, but there was no place for you to continue that in sixth grade. So it was there just a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Because, I mean, I'm so glad because I don't know why I knew about, finally found out or whatever, but when I went to North High School last summer, the last day when they had the, they put it all together. There were over 100 strings in that. I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
I just couldn't believe it. But now, I think it was the teacher at North, he said that there's almost 200 strings now in the system.
Oh, there's, you mean grades four to 12?
Yeah.
Our elementary number, so that 450, 500 and...
Plus grades year to year. Just about 50%, it's like 47% are strings, right? So half of our students are starting on strings rather than wind instruments. So the thing is, sometimes the band numbers might go down a little bit, but overall, the kids that are, the instrumental numbers are up, right? So if you see a band and the band's a little bit smaller, the kids choosing to play instruments is still overall growing because a lot of them are taking string instruments and not the wind instruments. It's just more to choose from.
Ukulele is the new recording. Ukulele, that's a category in itself.
I may have been able to figure it out. Thank you so much for everything you've done because this is, I mean, just from the time I started on the school committee or when I think about the arts program when I was a student, the way that, it's amazing. Every time I go to a performance, I don't think that you can kind of go even further and every time I'm more blown away by everybody's talent. So it's amazing. So in saying that, and I know I've sent you an email about this not too long ago, but I've been to three NSBA conferences.
I sent you the same email.
And I, I mean, those students...
Responded to both, did I not?
Yes, you did. You did, together.
For the record?
Yes, you did respond. But those students have incredible talent, but I think we all look at each other and say, "Our students might be better." And they're incredibly talented, just like these students. But it boggles my mind every time that we don't have any kind of representatives there, especially when it's in our own backyard. Like, I mean, we're in Pennsylvania and they brought kids in, was it like?
Texas.
Texas and New Mexico and they were wonderful, but they were so far away. And so I, you know, I put that out there that I know it's difficult to get. And then I also know there's the, where we, you know, obviously want to continue to grow, as mentioned by your slides, there's the, what is the name of that? There's a grant... There's the, what is the name of that? There's a grant foundation that NSBA has with art.
Magna Award. No, that's technology.
Well, the Magna Award is-
That's for school community.
But this, but there was like an art award associated, and I think I remember them talking about it, not this year, but the year before.
Before you speak, every year, we come out of one of those conferences, every single one of us, we come out and say, we can do that.
It's just the cost of getting them all there.
And I think you're applying this year, right?
Yeah, we're going to throw, we're going to put in an application. Dr. Maestas and I had some conversation about it, about what group, we have a large district and kind of what do you put forward to do that? And like I said, it's hard with the timing because every group, you can't, you can't look backwards. You have to look forward to what we think we might have this year, right? So it's a little bit of a guessing game. But yeah, we talked about some different groups to do that, and we'll put in an application. A lot of those events are very challenging to get into. There's just a lot of names. But we're happy to, more than happy to put a, and I'm sure we can hang with whoever goes there. I'm not saying we can't. We can. It's just a matter of getting chosen.
I think it's good when you go there, like, there's different music from different places. Like, there was a mariachi band one time. We're not going to have a mariachi band. But it's good to bring something in, you know? It could be, it could be our little ukuleles, you know? Oh, I'm sorry. And where is the ukulele program? Is it still just really mainly Nathaniel Morton?
No, so actually, so I think you all know, in third grade is kind of classic recorder time, right? And everybody loves the sound of the recorder. No, it's actually a great instrument to be able to start to teach notation. So we continue to do that, but transferring some of those same notation skills to ukuleles, again, it's about engagement. It's still teaching the same musical skills, but we're engaging them with something that, yes, is more popular, but also has a more pleasant sound to it. So most, if not all, the elementary schools use ukuleles to teach notation. Some have school programs or after-school programs. And at both middle schools, we do some ukulele and guitar as well. Again, as part of general music. It's a tool to teach the language, and that's what it is. It's just a tool to teach the language.
Mr. Sully?
I just want to speak sort of from personal experience. I have a fourth grader who started the trumpet this year, and I just wanted to give a shout out just from the communication from the school to home with Mrs. Cosse and just the level in which the attention to each child that's paid is remarkable. And I cannot believe how far he's come. And he's excited to get to the next level, not thinking that my oldest would actually want to play an instrument. So, you know, hats off to the program, to the coordinators, to the teachers involved. And it's really just exciting to see them excited. You know, he's involved in a couple of different things. So I just want to give you, you know, my hats off to you and to your staff because I see it personally at home and the excitement that comes. The dog doesn't like the trumpet practice so much at home. My chocolate lab doesn't like it very much, but he joins him. He barks pretty loud. The houses, we are a wild house with recorders, ukuleles, and trumpets and, you know, just from personal experience and a dog, yeah. It's just been very, very good, very consistent, very thorough. If he's not getting his sheets signed off, she's following up. It's just, it puts a little bit too of personal accountability on the student, on my child from personal experience. So just job well done. Yeah, we're very happy.
Thank you.
Yeah. You should be proud. And it sounds like, too, even hearing from fellow committee members, it sounds like your problem really is just your need for demand. We want more. And that's huge. And seeing how successful the This Is Me rollout was, was, I mean, to see that go viral and to see people I don't even know through social media in other states sharing it. I mean, we have remarkably talented students. And just to see it, the production that goes into it and the work that goes in, it's high level. I mean, I personally think it's things I would never have seen in high school when I went to high school. So to see some of the things that we roll out, it's just so impressive.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, this was, it's nothing like my high school either.
No.
Before Dr. Maestas speaks, we have remarkably talented students, but many school districts have remarkably talented students. What we're able to do is we're able to bring those students to the forefront. That's where-
Create those opportunities.
Well, even like, again, from my, my son never expressed interest in a musical instrument. So to see them sort of peel that layer back and get him comfortable and confident in playing it and excited, that's the difference. And that's where he could shine a little because if not, he'd just kind of get lost and say, eh, I guess I like it. But it's really the staff and it's the accreditation to the staff that engage the kids. And I just see it personal with my own children, so.
Dr. Maestas?
Thank you. I think one of the things regarding the NSBA performance piece, one of the things that is maybe a little bit difficult for us is 2020 and all the different commitments and the travel. These groups are very committed. And there's a lot of fundraising that goes along with each opportunity. So I think that's one of the things that we're going to have to measure and find the, I mean, I think that, in my opinion, one of the best opportunities is the 400th International Choir Chorus because they, you know, it's 2020. It's, I think that ties in with the whole theme of what we're trying to do. And, but again, that group has 30 kids, plus all the alumni of the group, which is probably more like 100, 120?
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
And they're all committed. So it's a matter of how do we make this application be appealing to highlight Plymouth, but yet make sure that we're not overtaxing the fundraising for those kids? So it's something that we have to consider.
Yep. Well, that was a great discussion. You can have the last word if you want.
Well, thank you. I would just like to say, thank you. It's a, I mean, it's my community. Personally, I live here, I work here, I lived here well before I worked here. I love living in Plymouth, and it's great to be able to work for all the kids and know that my kids have a great education and a great experience here. So thank you to all of you, sincerely, Central Office, School Committee, because you really do see the whole child and the opportunities for all kids. And that is, even in Great Massachusetts, that's not always true. And I really appreciate that about this town from a, obviously, a professional level, but also a personal level. So thank you all.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda has been held over from a couple of previous meetings. So let's take a look at our old business and see what we can update, see what we've accomplished. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Maestas.
Yeah, we're going to start with the school year 1516, which I don't know that this item will ever come off the list.
Yeah, the recycling item.
For tonight. This is regarding recycling, and I know that there, you know, the Central Office staff has been, you know, working on this not very actively. You know, we were a little bit more engaged with their whole recycling model probably 10 years ago. Things have changed dramatically in the market for recycling. And the cost to get rid of items is extremely high as we speak. So the whole model of recycling has changed significantly for all the different providers and companies that actually pick up materials from schools, trash and recycling materials. So most communities are really going with the single-stream model where they are actually separated at the transfer, not the transfer station, but at the site of disposal. And it's a very sophisticated process. I've had some pretty interesting conversations with people at that level. And, you know, I don't want to bust people's bubble around recycling, but it does tend to all go to the same location, and it gets divided and separated at those locations. The cost to dispose of plastic, there was a market for it in the past. That market is no longer. Even the cost for cardboard, there was money to be made with cardboard, and that is really non-existent anymore. So the ability for communities to actually make money on some of this stuff is just not there. So, you know, but even to get rid of some of these things, there's an increased cost for communities to figure that out. I don't know what the position of the town is right now as far as what the future will look like. I know that some of the issues that, some of the providers that were available for the community are having difficulty even honoring the contracts that they set up with communities because of these additional costs. So this is a long-term item. I don't know that we'll have an answer for it. I think there are still groups that still try to collect plastics, dispose of plastics collectively. But there are mechanisms within the providers that are taking care of the community to actually dispose of and actually have those products, you know, divided at the site of disposal. So again, I know I don't have a lot of, you know, information to actually share here, but we're not making a lot of progress on this.
I know my provider for my trash pickup no longer recycles. Like, they, I used to have two bins. They took one away. They no longer do recycle because of the costs involved. But I'm wondering if maybe, and maybe we already do this more like of an upcycle kind of recycling. Like, I know we might not be able to recycle everything the way that the community is thinking that we can. But even if we had like boxes or bins for scrap paper that the kids could use to draw on or the teachers could make notes on, or just things like that that aren't like completely recycling, but maybe just identifying a couple of areas where they can be used again might be a nice satisfying way to take care of some of these issues?
I think our paper consumption, I'll give you one example. Even with electronic school board, us going to electronic school board probably eight, nine years ago, we used to use on a yearly basis about two pallets of paper just to print the agendas for school committee. And I think that even by having kids with Chromebooks and using Chromebooks to do some of the work that kids are doing, we're minimizing the footprint just by allocation of paper. To your point, you know, what can we do in our schools to, you know, I think most of you have gone into locations in our schools where you have a pad of paper, but it's recycled paper, where one side is still, you know, you can write on it. So I think those opportunities are some things that we can encourage our schools to do.
Yeah.
You know?
Ms. Badger?
I was like, maybe even looking at, like, some of the, like, if we're going to use plastic silverware or anything like that, those biodegradable ones that they're coming out with. I mean, right now, some of them aren't like cost prohibitive because of how much they cost. But I don't know if we buy as much as we do in the district, if that would help. Or straws, or any little thing that we can do to kind of help, you know?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Sully?
That's just to kind of channel that sentiment. There's that movement now, no plastic, no straws. I think we're on that foundation. We've discussed recycling, but now we're looking at changes. You know, a lot more acknowledgement. I know my kids have come home, they've talked about plastic in the ocean. It's being taught in the curriculum. They're talking about global warming. They're talking about other things that are making kids conscious of our carbon footprint. And I've had those discussions at home, so I know it's being said in school. And they're conscious of it, which I'm happy about for sure. Recycling, I know since I've been elected to the school, but this is my fourth year, this has been a discussion. It's been on this list. And I do understand why it's an immovable entity, and there's a lot of minutia that makes it complicated. But I also feel like things are starting to change. There's a lot of advocacy for, you know, eliminating plastics and other options that we could bring in, I think potentially down the line that we might be faced with, too. That is affordable, but a variable option.
Agreed. I think, you know, one of the things that, we get letters from kids every once in a while, classes that do the research and want to try to do an environmental statement and try to urge the school department to go one direction or another. You know, I think there's some costs associated with food service for lunch prices because of the model that we have now. You know, we don't, we used to, you know, wash all our plates, and we used to have plates. But we don't have plates anymore. We have disposable plates. And there's a cost with the washing, and there's more staffing involved with having that operation. So I think over time, you know, we've adjusted to creating cost-effective, low-cost opportunities. When you look at some of these other options, they're more expensive, which then in turn causes the lunch prices to go up. So I think, you know, that's one thing that we can really have another conversation with our food service director on because we have this, I have this conversation with them almost every year about what we can do. I mean, there are products out there that are made out of bamboo, made out of other products that are not, that are biodegradable, that can actually be used, but, you know, the cost is pretty up there, you know?
Okay, we'll move on to the next.
Yes. So as you see, this item will continue.
It's going to take it off a stake.
It's not, it's not, you know, I think-
It's not going to do anything.
No, I think we need to redo it.
It's more about conservation.
Yeah.
If the committee, whatever the committee wants. Well, I think we can, I think what we'll do is, you know, as of the minutes for this particular item, we'll reflect that. We're going to, we'll start to kind of push the agenda on what we can do to be more of a recycling-type community, you know? And see what we can do to minimize what we actually dispose of.
Actually, we could do, is that why wiping off dishes?
Well, yeah.
Give them to Dr. Swinton.
Okay.
That's joking.
So if you want, then, this, all of the verbiage left over from 2015, we can remove and start the new narrative about reusing as much as we can reuse.
Great idea.
Yeah, I think it'd be much better than leaving all this stuff on it.
Okay.
Some of that's not relevant anymore because it's not even an option for us to look at models of that direction, right?
Yeah.
Okay, moving to the next one.
The next one is Common Core Park informational videos. This is something that came up back in 2016. And what we started to do is through Ed TV, create videos that really describe and walk you through the whole idea of curriculum and what different programs have for the type of curriculum development and what, how that translates through the different courses and through the years. So I think you had an opportunity to see last school committee, one of the videos, science has been produced. So every department will have a video that will actually show the complexities of the curriculum and how the curriculum is being taught. I think Rob Powers and his information last week translated into video is very powerful. It's not about how we address Common Core or even the assessment model that we have in Massachusetts, but it's what do we do to teach the curriculum that will address all of the standards that are being presented to our students? So that's what's being done. And as you can see, we actually have some videos that are produced and out on the internet, and that is a work in progress to get them all operational.
Ms. Badger, do you want to comment on this one?
I mean, I think, I think that's the, I think I like that the videos are going to highlight the different programs. But I think that the initial discussion from when we had it was more around the, how do I teach my kid what my kid is learning? You know, like, the child comes home and is doing some, I think, if I remember, you know, like, is doing some sort of math. How do I help my child? I think that was also a piece of it. What is my child going to learn at X, Y, and Z? If I'm remembering correctly, I think that was part of it as well.
Dr. Campbell?
I'm sorry, I was looking towards Ms. Hunt. I know when we initially started that, we were talking about, it was back when Park started. In the assessment piece, right? And we try, you know, I think the conversation involved with people, how do we show them, demonstrate what's being done? Because the assessment is based on the curriculum and what we're teaching. And I would have always said, even back when I was a principal, if we're teaching kids effectively, the Common Core standards, they're going to do well on the assessment. So to do a video on the test itself, if we're showing how we're teaching kids to demonstrate their understanding, like some of the things that the coordinators mentioned at their last presentation and the videos that we're producing, I think it makes more sense. We certainly, I think, at the same time, continue to try to make the videos you are talking about because we don't get large audiences for the gatherings when we try to get people together for those videos. And the videos make sense. I think particularly in a district this big, to have a district-wide event, sometimes we're better off to have these videos that can stand the test of time. And we can use them at open houses. We can use them at parent information meetings. We can use them when the kindergartners are coming in. So we're trying to evolve the videos and make not only these more substantial videos, but then small videos that can be used in a number of locations for a variety of audiences.
Okay.
Ms. Hunt?
I have a couple of things. I think when we originally talked about this, too, it was to clear up the confusion between we're going from MCAS to Park. Well, what's Park? And Park has five new question types that MCAS never had. And I think that's the kind of information we were looking to get out to the public. Like, they had more than just multiple choice. You know, once we introduced- Like they had more than just multiple choice, you know, once we introduced Park. And now we're out of Park and into the next generation MCAS. And I, I think parents are less confused now.
I would completely agree. I think that time when we had the two consortiums going on was a very complicated time here.
It was really confusing.
And we did a number of parent meetings and meet.
And we could choose which one, and we took one with the high school, but we did Park with the elementary school.
Yes.
And I think that was like the original request for this.
It was a very complicated time.
It was.
It absolutely was. You're absolutely right.
Cause I had a colleague in Chelmsford that did videos like that, and I think I shared them with you when we were talking about that.
And there was an anti-Park movement, and there was a lot of things. It was just misinformation out there. And how do we, how do we inform the families about like what is really going on regarding the assessment piece? And we don't have a lot of people that are really questioning the assessment now.
Well, now we know what it is.
Because it's, it's, it's reflected in what we're teaching in the classroom. So it's just an extension of that. We're doing it computer-based, so we educate them on that process. But again, it's, it's, we have to continuously, this is something that we will continuously have to do as new students come into our district and new children in kindergarten.
And two, two more quick points. Another one is I, I like all these curriculum videos, but I think that, you know, that's great that they're on the internet, but I think we need to make sure that we push them out as much as possible to the parents and the community. And then the, the third thing is, and it's, it's loosely related to this too, is we've been talking a lot more about maybe bringing back some of the forums that we used to do.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Bringing back some of the forums. You know, there was one year, a few years ago, that we did five forums of all different things, from, you know, safety to curriculum to things like that. So, you know, I know we've been talking about maybe trying them again. And these, maybe we could do, we could have a curriculum night where there's roundtables in science and, and the parents can go to each one and learn about.
And we've also had some of our coordinators working to do it right at the building level too, because people tend to go out to their own schools more than to our district events. So we're trying to, as, as many, as you're saying, Ms. Hunt, as many opportunities as we possibly can, in addition to the videos, which we can, you know, we can share out, we can share with buildings as they're doing events, if we have them multiple nights. But you're right. I mean, I think the more that we can educate our families on what are we, what's happening in your classroom with your children, and what does that look like? How does that translate?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the whole math thing, I laugh about it, cause I deal with it at my work too. New math is older than MCAS.
Yes.
It's like 20 years old now, so.
It's not really new.
Right. And I, I, you know, and, and I do know that the school, most elementary schools will hold a math night for the parents to solve that. So I, I mean, I, I laugh at that. I mean.
Yeah, but, but when the math coordinator was here last week, we heard about the new, new math.
Right, 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 right.
I think the new, new math is the demand. I think that the level of expectations in terms of the proficiency, the level of proficiency that students need to go, particularly at the high school, is, it's just, it's, it's higher and higher. So I think you see that, you see the, the curriculum gets more complex in the younger grades. We're exposing them to concepts that perhaps they weren't, you know, weren't being addressed until late elementary, middle school sometimes. Again, it's, it's, it's an introduction and we, it's, we call it, it's like a spiraling approach, so we don't necessarily expect mastery when they're in lower grades, but they can handle geometric, they need to be exposed to geometric concepts. It's not that we're teaching them a geometry class, but they need to be exposed to that. And the developmental appropriateness of that continues, continues to get more complex as they get to eighth, ninth, 10th grade when they're taking those classes.
Ms. Hunt?
I'm wondering if instead of like taking it down or leaving it up, we maybe even just change the title of it. I mean, cause right now, it's not Park informational videos, cause we don't use Park.
Correct.
And Common Core, we, actually Massachusetts doesn't even use Common Core either, so.
It feels, I'm gonna ask you, but it seems like this, this can be taken off.
Taken off and done again, again.
Yeah.
Ms. Badger?
I think that, I think, Ms. Hunt's point of doing those forums or doing those educational, we don't want it to drop off to where we, not that we're gonna forget about the parents or forget about the community's understanding, but I think it's important for us to have something that we look at and say, hey, did we, are there questions that are happening?
My thinking was, I'm sort of agreeing, this could come down, but the new one that goes up is about, is about, go ahead.
Just a suggestion, maybe if we're, for new business, like a new business item, which would become on, as you're saying, Dr. Sorenson, it's, I, I see it as family engagement, right? It's not just communicating, but how do we engage families in understanding what's happening in our classrooms?
In the curriculum, within the curriculum, right?
Yeah.
All right. Dr. M.
And just to add to that, I think Dr. Campbell said something that was really important, is that how do we work with the schools to identify key moments where parents are present, where some of this work can take place, so that it, I mean, we've done, one of the, one of the reasons why we really haven't continued with the forums, I, I think if we look at the attendance on those forums, it's, it, I mean, we advertised and advertised every means that we possibly can, calls, and we got a handful of people. And I think we have to start, start taking a look at what the most efficient way to grab the attention of people. When they're in the building and they have an opportunity, we can use that.
Can I add something to that? If, if my second grader is at the federal furnace and the math teacher sends home, or the teacher sends home, we're starting a new math program next week, that's brand-new math, would you like a precursor on it? I bet you those people are now gonna come out, cause it's right at the building level. It's not, it's not the district.
It's difficult.
Right. The, the building level is always when we have the most success. Yep, no doubt.
Ms. Badger?
I was actually gonna say the same thing, or just those, when there's a awards night or something, you need like five minutes before the award ceremony, here's what we're doing, and then go into the awards. You know, your kids are getting an award now, here you go. Here's five minutes.
The head fake.
Or have their kids perform at it.
Let's bring it up in the new business, and then it'll get onto this list that way, which is coming up next on the agenda. So, so let's, we're gonna take this off, cause we're gonna have another item that's gonna take its place. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
All right, moving along, Dr. M.
Moving along. Health curriculum, I, I think we've, we've all been kept up to date on that. We are moving forward with the revision of the model for the, the district and, and staffing along with that. So this is quite a big accomplishment for the district. And I think this probably will stay on until we are fully implemented. And, you know, I think, but as of right now, we've made a lot of progress on that. And I, you know, over the summer, when we meet, we'll get more and more information on what the curriculum scope and sequence looks like and all those bits and pieces that we're working on.
Right, I agree. Okay. Okay, next one?
Minimum failing grade, there were, you wanna talk to that, Dr. Campbell?
Sure, happy to. So that was instituted this year. So we have a minimum grade policy at the high school, so students cannot get in certain terms. We had a conversation about that below a 45. So we, we know some students, if they, for whatever reason, it could be, you know, on their own accord, it could be because they had a, you know, a tragic event and their grades are down, or whatever it is. But giving students hope to try to get through the year. So we did have a number of students who met that criteria earlier in the year. Again, we're gonna wait until the end of the school year to see how that's helping, but I can tell you that it really looks, you know, as of now, that having that minimum grade policy at the high school will help a number of students in terms of meeting the proficiency or the expectation for passing those courses. So once that is, once the, once the year is ended and the grades are finalized, we'll have a better sense of that. But we did implement the minimum failing policy last year and implemented it this year. It looks pretty good.
I, I think this program, as we put, it was a very difficult program to put together. There was a lot of discussion. I think we have something that has value to it. I can think of one student who didn't give up, even though he got a 22 first term.
Glad to hear that.
You know.
Allow that to happen, for him to get back in the swing.
So I think this is accomplished. This one, I think we can take it off.
All right, moving on to home internet access. We did have a home internet question that was put into one of the Department of Education surveys that we offer to families. The results that came back identified that, on this particular survey, that a high 90% of our students had home internet. The only issue that we didn't distinguish is, is if it was purely Wi-Fi home-based connectivity, or was it cellphone connectivity as far as Wi-Fi connectivity? So one of the things that I think we have to do is we, we did identify that there is a high access to getting the internet, but how they get it is another question that we have to try to dig deeper into. And I think this is relatively a, a high level of importance to us, because we are gonna be engaging into the whole idea of one-to-one technology. And we can't offer a one-to-one technology if they don't have internet access at home. So that's something that we're gonna be defining at a higher level, because we, we really, we really have determined that there is access, but not specific access. So we need to ask very pointed questions.
So what does the school district do when they come across families who don't have the access we need?
So there are a couple of options that we have. There are, there are two organizations that actually provide very low-cost internet, internet for families, so they can get internet for their homes for, for very low cost. There's one vendor that we have worked with in the past. There's another vendor that we're aware of that can actually provide these solutions for families. So when we do roll out a one-to-one model, we will have a variety of opportunities that parents can migrate to, to be able to help provide those access points of service if they need it. And we will, we will try to create that for the future.
Will we have, or do we have a vehicle that will identify those families confidentially? So we can approach a family and say, this is what we're doing, and we have a way to do that?
I think what we would do is, as we began that rollout, we would identify with parents as if they believe that they have a need for that type of opportunity. We would have them connect with us, and at that point, we would work through our systems of information that we have to validate that and actually provide resources that they can actually gain that type of support. And I imagine in the future, Dr. Sorenson, we would have some level of fund that would be able to help with families that couldn't even manage the monthly fee. Some of these organizations that are offering service, it's like $10 a month for internet service for the home, which is very, very inexpensive. But again, some families may still have difficulty providing that. So we would look at aligning those families with some additional resources to actually help that, so it's not difficult.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next one is, what should we do with that, Dr. Sorenson? Leave it on there to see what happens in the future?
Yeah, I think, I think we have to leave it on a little longer.
It's fine. All right, moving on to the selectmen's request for reactivation of the consolidation committee. I brought this up with the town manager two weeks ago. And right now, the, the town hall is going through an audit of their technology department. And they're in no position right now to engage in a consolidation for technology. And also, they're going through a building audit right now with their, with their buildings as far as the condition of them. I think that town meeting, you, you've heard quite a bit of difficulty the town is having with just maintaining the repairs that are happening in, in the town. So the town manager has put that on hold for now, and she had no problem with me mentioning that tonight.
So note it and leave it on there.
Stonem Douglas. That. I think we, we did a number of things to support that initiative. I know we did have.
Ms. Badger?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think that the title, and I think we go back again to the title not being what it needs to be at this time. I think that it's important that we still have it, because I believe that those conversations that you had with our student leaders were really powerful. And I think that's something that, you know, whether it's you or it's some members of the school committee that just maybe go in and meet and have a discussion with some student leaders at the different levels. I think just hearing from you, what you brought back and what you got from those meetings is really powerful. So to me, I think it's changing the name and, or in some ways, just keeping it on the back burner to remember those important engagement opportunities.
And I think that, I gave an example last school committee meeting of the opportunity we have with the RISE program that we were involved with two weeks ago. And, you know, it was a very good opportunity for me and Patty and some community leaders to just sit and talk with kids about what was on their mind and engage with them. And I, I think those are great opportunities that we have to check for understanding and gain a different level of understanding from, from them as to what they are going through. But, you know, those are things that I think are really positive cultural things for our kids to be engaged with.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
So what does the committee feel about doing, what should we do with this item?
We have to change the name of it.
I think it's student.
Mr. Selly?
I'm sorry, I just, I think it's one of those, we can't just close it and say it's fixed. I think it's something that, unfortunately, this is the climate that kids live in and to have the advocacy and, you know, to keep it open and make sure that we can just change the language and know that it's on there. And we can address it as.
I can tell the committee that I'm, I'm in the process of developing an agenda item that we will address in one of the future meetings that is related to school shooting. So we'll be discussing it at the table at some point in the future. So I guess we just leave it on. We can change the title. I don't know, I don't know what the title would be, though.
I, I think it's more student engagement.
Yeah.
All right. All right. All right. Okay. Customer service.
Yeah, we did, we have offered a course, a program for customer service throughout the district, through all our support staff. Now again, how that translates and how we continue to foster that model is really important to us. So we'll see how that translates over time. But again, I think it's the modeling that we set for our, our schools as to how customer service is really presented at our building. So again, we have provided a consistent level of, of education opportunity for our, our staff members that are at that level, and that is something that has happened.
Ms. Hunt, do you wanna comment?
No, I, I, I think it definitely should be ongoing. I think recently I had a conversation, it might have been in regards, it might have been after the presentation with the special education department too, where the, a lot of those parents, the parents that probably need it the most. And when we talked about like how are we gonna get the parents aware that they're our, when CPAC was here. And I, I, I haven't physically noticed any changes, but I haven't been in the school as much. But I, I know it's still really important and, you know, it's something that everybody should practice every day. So I don't know if I would wanna ever forget about it, if that makes any sense. I agree.
So I think the title of this one would be sort of the continuation of professional development in the area of customer service.
I'm really, really glad that we offer it as a professional development. Thank you.
It's the awareness of how important it is as a district and what our expectation culturally across the district is for, you know, customer service. Okay?
Okay, moving on.
Foundation budget review. I think this has been one of the highlights of the, the school committee this year in looking at how the foundation budget is analyzed. I know that there's a great deal of movement regarding how the foundation budget is actually calculated. And one of the things that, I, I think we have a lot of conversation about it. I, I know there is a great deal of difficulty, because the problem is not within the dollars that people are requesting for additional per pupil. The problem is, is within the foundation calculation. And until that foundation calculation is re-analyzed and special provisions for districts are inserted into that foundation, it's going to be very difficult for communities like Plymouth to realize significant increases to per pupil for chapter 70. It's, it's, yeah, it's troubling.
Yeah, Ms. Badger?
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, go, go.
I, I had the opportunity to talk with Representative Moratori, and he, he like couldn't, he said it was one of like the highlights of, you know, we just said it's a highlight of maybe what we did this year, but the highlight of the conversation, and he even suggested, and this goes back to even changing again another title, but that this is something that we do every six months or once a year, as something that, you know, benefits both sides, because, I mean, we've got something that we're hopefully working on, and we'll hopefully come out of this, from that conversation, and, you know, we're just learning what's happening. And he said a lot of other reps to it for all their districts, so he was happy to help us continue that conversation.
They all have a twist?
Yes.
So how do you see the consistencies with, on all the school districts that are having foundational?
Yep, completely.
So, this is always unfinished business?
Yeah.
Until the foundation budget...
It really is.
Trustment.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you, you can get, you know, $300 million into more for the budget for chapter 70. But, until the formula changes, we're not going to realize that the way, the way, the way foundation formula is written is certain communities are going to benefit a lot at a, at a higher level than Plymouth will.
Population and characteristics.
So, we're, we're fighting for dollars for, for other districts in a sense.
That's exactly what we're doing. Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Which is, there's nothing wrong with that. But, you know, we got to cut, trying to, we're trying to help our taxpayers here in Plymouth. All right, moving on. Okay, MASC summer institute. I, what are we doing with this?
Ms. Hunt?
Um, I, well, I don't think we ever did anything with it last year. It is, I have new dates for this year. If you, if anybody's interested, it's the 12th and 13th of July. It's not $50, it's $60 this year. It's in Marlborough. And the focus on this one is equity. But, I know on Friday, there's a 70-minute workshop on chapter 70. And then equity, understanding the dynamics of power, privilege, and prejudice. The session's on Saturday, a role of the chair and using equity audits to improve educational opportunities. And then social media and equity policies relating to equity and achievement. So, it's a, it looks like it's a one and a half. It's Friday starting at four and Saturday starting at eight. So, I'm just going to throw it out there again.
Right.
It's not chopped up. It's a day and a half.
We, right. We can take this off our list. We have the announcement for the summer institute.
Yeah.
Maybe each year at this time, we'll make sure that...
So, I don't know if it's something that we, you know, a few of us could go to or... I mean, I don't know what my calendar looks like those days. It's July 12th from four to six. So, it's like a Friday afternoon. And then July 13th. And they do have, it's in Marlborough, they do have ho- discounted rooms for the night.
Yeah, but you're going to stay and then you're going to wait until two o'clock.
No, no, eight to 10 the next day.
Oh, eight to 10?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, four to six the first day, eight to 10 the second day.
And talking about chapter 70, which we...
Okay, moving on. We'll take this one off. Moving on to the next one.
Well, the next one is relative to behavior consequences in the area of type two and three, and four, excuse me, three and four. And this was relative to a conversation we had on students that were out of school for type two and three, excuse me, three and four consequences, which they could have up to 10 days of suspension. And the whole idea is, what do we, what can we do within our schools to help students so that they didn't lose some level of, of momentum with grades and supports in, in school while they were out of school? So, we've worked with our guidance departments to really look at how we can help those students who may be out for long-term suspensions so that they feel that they're engaged and connected to school. Sometimes it involves tutoring. Sometimes it involves kids coming back to school and having the opportunity to work on, work with teachers and so on to actually gain that status back when they're out for that period of time. So, I think this is something that's been in place shortly after we discussed it. We've worked with our schools to actually really work closely with those students so that they don't lose momentum and feel that they've, are, they're stepping back as far as that momentum they've created.
So, let me understand. I understand later on, when we talk about policy, we're going to be talking about kids who are 10 days and more. This is the group that's under 10 days.
Absolutely.
And are you telling me that since we've discussed this, students who are suspended for under 10 days, somebody has reached out to them?
Absolutely. And that's the model that we have in place. We did have it for students that were beyond because it kicks in tutoring and, and that type of thing. Students that are within that 10-day, connections are made with the school. There's a little bit more communication back and forth to try to be able to help students.
Keep them connected.
And keep, keep them engaged and connected. And also, when they get back, how can they feel that there's a level of, you know, let's work towards getting you back on track opposed to just saying, "You're back now. This is what's expected."
All right, I think that's excellent. I think we can take this off. Ms. Frye?
They've actually put in one to two phone calls during the timeout and then a re-entry meeting with a planned discussion about what the steps are regarding makeup work and a connection with an individual when they return instead of just walking back in and going to class. So, we've done that.
Thank you. We can take this off.
Uh, the next one is mindfulness and increased social emotional awareness in program. I think when we started talking about this, we were not quite into the release of information on our model for health. I think when you start taking a look at all the things that we're doing, social emotional awareness and mindfulness components will be embedded into some of the pieces that we have in, in health. And one of the things that I think we're, you know, somewhat concerned about, when you talk about individual teachers offering these opportunities, it's difficult for one person to offer it and another one, you know, trying to offer it. So, what's the constant mechanism to be able to offer some of these opportunities for students? And I believe that we will see more and more of this as we start rolling out our, our, our health model at the elementary and developing some of these skills and opportunities within, within our schools.
Ms. Selly, or Ms. Hunt, comment on this? Because your names are in this one.
It's kind of up there with the recycling component too. I think there's a movement with this. Schools are adopting different techniques and ways to handle the social emotional crisis. And I, I think it's important, so...
Absolutely.
The only thing I'm thinking too is, is, you know, a lot of this came out with the number of, not incidents, but concerns that we had over the last year. And I, you know, maybe like to see some kind of numbers maybe or tracking to see if it gets any better next year or the, I know it's kind of...
Well, if I may, the numbers have been very consistent over the years.
Haven't seen them as much.
Um, it's, it's, it's slowed down a little bit. But, keep in mind that I've, I've shared with you more than I have in the past. And I think...
Which we appreciate, by the way.
And I, and I will tell you that these, these things have always happened. They, it's consistent. I think we have highs and lows of the year. And that's something that I almost chart out. And I think before holidays is really important.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, before summer vacation, we start seeing some spikes. And I think it's the engagement. I think my, my son, my, my middle son, the, the last day of school for probably 10 years in a row was the hardest day for him. Because the structure is, is changing. And it's, 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 it's an unusual time for, for kids when all that structure's gone, you know, for them. It's a different kind of structure. But, again, I think to your point, when you brought it up, how do we teach kids to handle those times when they start feeling that anxiety or that different feeling that they have when they don't have these structures?
So, this is an ongoing item, I think.
Well, I, I think, I don't know that we'll ever get a handle on social emotional type of opportunities. But, I think we can start to create more and more resources in the district to be able to help with this, you know?
So, is the committee feeling that with that statement, we can take this off? That we are creating resources? No? No, leave it on?
I wouldn't mind revisiting it every year. I mean...
Ms. Badger?
I just think it's, I mean, regardless of whether it's stayed consistent in the last few years, I think it's still something we need to have a reminder of to just check in and, I mean...
My way of thinking, and I agree with you guys, we could never forget about it anyway.
It's true.
But, if you want to leave it on, we'll leave it on.
I think it just goes hand in hand with just general trends.
Yes.
It's, you know, I'm not comparing or contrasting what we do or don't do. But, schools that have yoga, you know, you need certified yoga instructors who work with children. Or, you know, deep meditation and hypnosis. It's, it's a different type of science and it's a different type of approach. But, I'm more interested to see the trends and how it does impact kids positively. You know, we heard over the weekend, you know, one of the speeches that was delivered was about anxiety and being able to ask for help and pressure. And I'm a holistic advocate, and I feel like this is a slow hanging fruit, you know? But, then again, you need certified instructors. It's putting more pressure on teachers. But, I, I feel it's important. And it's a movement, and it's a trend. I think we'll see more of.
Okay, move on to the next one, the last one.
Next one is PFLAG, which is, this was brought up relative to the assembly that was at South Middle School early in the year. There was a, a community gathering that was put on by the League of Women Voters later this year. And that was at...
No Place for Hate.
Yeah, that was, that was, oh, was it?
No Place for Hate.
Oh, I'm sorry, No Place for Hate.
Okay, you're fine.
I don't, I didn't remember which one it was.
It's okay.
Same people.
But, again, I think from, from my understanding, the presentation was, was very well done. And I think it gave people the opportunity to have an understanding of what PFLAG and their presentation can do for a community. And it, you know, if, and our hope was that people that had some questions as to the presentation that was done at South Middle would have the opportunity to go and see the content and, and the scope of what they were addressing.
Statement made. Ms. Badger?
Well, I, I think that it was wonderful that we had them. And the presentation was excellent. I know I mentioned it a while ago. But, my thing too, and I, I'm going to guess Ms. Hunt's going to have the same thought, is that the safe schools, if we're not comfortable with PFLAG in the schools or as a, maybe as a community-wide, it, for some reason, that has a connotation of a liberal connotation. I think it's important that as a school district, that we consider bringing safe schools, right, safe schools? Safe school program into...
MASC, oh, no, NSBA has a safe schools program now too.
But, isn't it, what's the, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the...
Jeff Parodi?
Yes. What is that called? I'm losing my, but, the state organization, I think that's really important.
Jeff, Jeff Parodi.
Yeah.
He's come in before.
Remember the name of it. But, that we bring them in because clearly, PFLAG might be looked at as a liberal wing. But, I think it's important to go down the...
Well, it...
I don't know. I know.
Dr. Maestis?
To that point, I, I think there's a way to do it.
Yes.
And it's how you communicate it.
Yes.
And how you roll it out. And I think that, that's, that's not the hard, and I think, you know, this, this opportunity that South Middle had, I think, kind of gave the district an opportunity to see how the community would feel about presentations of this nature. But, I also think there's a right way to do it. And there's an opportunity of how we can roll something like this out. So, I, I don't think that'll stop us from doing these presentations.
Okay, good. Okay.
Ms. Hunt?
That, that was going to be my comment, is that this is great. And it was great that we did it in the community. But, it can't be a one-time thing because the students change every year. And, you know, it, it'll hit a different group of kids next year. And I, I'd like us to still do something to address this.
Address what?
Just address inclusion and acceptance and not bullying and the whole message...
Of school safety or...
Yeah, everything, all of it. It's really...
Safety for all students.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And this tends to just pigeonhole it. And I think advocacy is incredibly important, especially with kids at this age. But, I think ultimately, Dr. Maestis is communication.
Well, I think the thing that we have to also consider is there are, there's limited time to bring opportunities like, it doesn't matter what it is, whatever the topic is. We have to, and the schools have to be very careful to pick opportunities that are going to cover a wide spectrum of, of education for our kids. I mean, I'm going to tell you, they get solicited frequently from a variety of people that want to get the attention of kids. And I think...
I didn't want to take the phone call.
What we have to do at, at Central Office is try to help shape...
Right.
What we can support based on the totality of what we're dealing with in our, in our system. And, and we can help with that.
Yeah.
I think that is just management. But, again, how is it done consistently? How do we embrace a partner to help us do some of these resource things?
Right, right. And I think that this is just a, the reason that, that when you said what, this, this particular topic is because it's, it's the largest, you know, so, kids commit suicide because of this. I mean, it's, it's a big issue as far as safety goes. And, and I've said it a million times that, you know, it's not, it's not a political thing. It's, it's safety. And whatever we have to do to make our kids safe, we need to do it. And I just think that, I mean, we do do a lot. And I don't know if, I mean, we've got the pride groups. We have the GSAs in the high schools. We, we do do it. The teachers support it. They have safe zones on all the classroom doors, or they used to. So, I mean, I know we do do a lot of it. I just think that we just need to continue to reinforce that we are a safe space and that students can, can be safe within our schools no matter what, what it is.
Ms. Badger?
And it's, it's safety and it's understanding. I think the understanding is what was...
You don't have to accept it. You just have to...
Yeah. And I think that's what, just going to the PFLAG presentation, having never gone to one before, but feeling that I had a pretty strong understanding of the different groups and how people identify themselves. But, it gives you an even further understanding of differences even within certain groups of people. It was, you know, just very, a different understanding. And I think that's important for our kids to get.
They do good presentations.
It's an excellent presentation.
And I think Dr. Dr. Maestis's point is that, you know, they get lots of requests. Let them evaluate.
Yes.
This is an important topic. Let them evaluate programs and make recommendations.
Yeah.
Good communication.
We just can't go backwards. We just can't go backwards.
Well, I think after this year, knowing the dialogue that took place after, there's a lot of consultation with some of those opportunities.
And there's a lot more work to be done, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I think that concludes that agenda item. And before we move on to the next one, we will take a break because I've had a request. What time is it? So, we'll take 10 minutes. Thank you. You stand in recess for 10 minutes?
Brew and score the table.
All right, thank you. Back in session. Thank you for that little break. On to new business. So, let's refresh, refresh the new business we were just talking about. Dr. Campbell?
Well, family, family engagement regarding curriculum and what's happening in the classroom. That was one that we certainly put on there. What else did we add from the old, I think we're redefining the, to talk about school safe...
Student engagement.
Student engagements.
Student engagement for, forums, forums for students to, to have that engagement with...
So, we're going to send word out to the schools that this is something we're looking for next year to invite parents in for...
Having opportunities to, to sort of gauge the student community about how they feel...
At the building level.
Purposeful, yeah, discussion, not just...
Meaningful conversations with kids about those, those, those issues that we, were in that agenda item.
All right. Okay. What else do we have on the new business?
A lot.
Ms. Hunt, during our previous discussion, raised the, the conference in, where is it again?
Marlborough.
Marlborough in the middle of July. If anybody's interested in going to that, if you check your calendars, let Central Office know so they can make arrangements for you to go.
And all the, all the details are on the MASC website. If anybody wants to see what...
Just, just let PEG know. And then she can arrange that.
I'm sorry?
Just let PEG know and she can arrange that.
Let PEG know, okay. Under reports, next, so we're finished with new business, moving on to the superintendent, superintendent report.
Yeah, I have four things to report tonight. I just want to, you know, thank everyone at the building levels, North and South High, High School for the weekend. I think our graduations went, went well. I think we lose sight of all the planning and preparation that it takes to get a graduation to work as they did. You know, we, we very happy with going outside at South. We real concerned about that. But, it, it worked out well. The, the weather held off and it was, it was wonderful. So, just want to, you know, highlight all the staff, faculty and staff that just worked on getting that to, to go. And I thought Saturday went, went very well. Tomorrow, I'll be presenting in Boston tomorrow morning at the Silverman Symposium. This is, Beth Israel Deaconess does a symposium every year for promising practices in the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital System. And I'll be presenting tomorrow on prevention with Dr. Mendoza, who's the chief of psychiatry for Beth Israel Deaconess. So, tomorrow morning, I'll be doing that. And then on Wednesday, I'm signing an articulation agreement with Mass Maritime. So, students who are in our biomedical program will actually get college credit by being in our program and passing the courses that we offer. And we'll have an articu, I'll have an articulation agreement signing with the Admiral on Wednesday, which is, it's a highlight for our science program. And Allison Burden has done a great job of trying to, to get this program off the ground. And as you have all heard, that it's, it's working well. And as Ms. McKay sent out to you, excuse me, as... And as Ms. McKay sent out to you, excuse me, as Peg sent out to you, I don't know why I said McKay, as Peg sent out to you, I was, I'm going way back in time here. As, as Peg sent out to you, she identified that the open house for 11 Lincoln Street is on June 10th. Okay, June 10th. And we will highlight.
That's a Monday night, right?
That's a Monday night, yeah. Okay. So that's where we are right now. And I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Sorensen.
And now we're up to the health curriculum.
Yes. So since last week, we conducted interviews and we have finalists actually coming in tomorrow. So we have a number of finalists for the additional health educators that will be doing lessons in classrooms with students. Principals are gonna be observing that and debriefing with all of them. So we look to finalize those additional health educators this week.
Okay. Moving along, question, Ms. Badger?
I just have a question. Once we get the health curriculum all figured out, will that be, will we use it, like the curriculum programs page to post that?
Yes.
You know, like some people are always looking for when we teach what. And I know that's a question.
Yeah, the curriculum will, will be posted where we post other curriculums.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the health? Okay. All right. Student handbook, under letters.
We have a one correspondence this evening. It's a thank you letter to Plymouth South Principal Jim Hannah from the Executive Director of the Mass State Coaches Association. An appreciation to the Plymouth South Athletic Director and spring track coaches for hosting the May 4th Annual MSTCA Red Alerbach Freshman-Sophomore Track and Field Meet. Say that quick. Plymouth South High School Athletic Staff did an outstanding job and more than 1,000 athletes had a positive experience at the meet at Plymouth South.
Great. Thank you very much. That's the only correspondence?
Yes.
Okay. Student handbook, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Just wanna point out that the formatting of this document you have is not finalized. What we do is we share this with a number of administrators across the district. Probably about 30 people look at this over the course of the year. We share it as a Google Doc. So it's, it, it, it does some interesting things to the formatting of it when we, when we share it. So if you see some things that seem a little out of whack, this is not the way that it will look when it gets published. But for the content purposes, we wanna go through this. So very few changes this year, really. So this shouldn't take that long in terms of the proposed changes. I'll start with the elementary. The elementary appendix, there's only really two changes. One is the school hours. For some reason, we had a, within the start times and end times, we had a dismissal end time in there. We don't really end dismissal until the kids are gone. So it's really unnecessary to have that. So we're not gonna stop at 3:35 if we have students there at 3:40. Dismissal will continue. So we're taking that out. And then, in reference to homework, the guidelines were broken down by grade level. It really doesn't happen in practice that way. It's really generally 30 to 45 minutes. Students are encouraged to read every night is reading log. So we've, we've changed that to be more reflective of what's happening in terms of the practice there. So again, very straightforward for elementary proposals. Nothing at the middle school for the middle school appendix. No, no recommended changes there. We've done a lot of work over the years on that. And regarding the high school appendix, Appendix C, starting on C4, additional requirements for CCTE certification. Referencing certifications, Surf Safe, CPR, First Aid, and must complete the CCTE program to be certified. And there is a typo in there which will be taken out this Tuesday seventh in there. That is not a formatting Google Doc issue. That will be taken out. Excuse me. In reference to graduation on C6, in terms of requirements, we've added underneath the science before, it, it did not include biomedical programs. We are allowing for biomedical interventions to be the only biomedical course that may count towards graduation. So in terms of.
Let me ask you why you wrote "may" in that sentence. Is it gonna count or isn't it gonna count?
I wrote "may."
It says, "Medical interventions are the only biomedical course that may count towards graduation."
That shall count, shall, it should be shall.
Yeah, because it's going to.
It will, if they take the class.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Yes, correct. That is the recommendation.
Right, I agree with that. I just thought the word "may," I misunderstood the word "may."
The word "may" is probably a poor word choice there.
All right.
Yes. Okay. So that medical intervention will be allowed as a graduation requirement. And there was a lot of discussion about that with Mrs. Riden regarding that. In terms of mid-years and finals, reference to that, we're eliminating the reference to mid-year exams and having 10% of the overall grade for finals. This is something that we've had a lot of conversation about. We, our staff do a lot of mid-year examinations in the classroom where we're gonna get away from the formal mid-year exam schedule. Continue with the final exam schedule, but where it's, it takes a lot of time away from learning the way that we currently do it. And we're gonna be doing more formal comprehensive examinations during the classes as teachers do throughout the school year. So we've had some, a lot of conversation about that and everyone is, is in the collective opinion that this is a good thing to do. On section C15, regarding the use of tobacco, inserted tobacco products, electronic cigarettes and vape pipes will be confiscated and not returned. We've had some people that were a little surprised by that in the past, think that they could just take it home. It's crystal clear that we're not, you know, if you come into school with that, it's not, it's not going home regardless of who asks for it.
I'm gonna ask a question that's gonna show my ignorance. Is, is vape a, the word vape, is it a brand name?
No.
No.
Vapor.
Okay.
No, it's not, no.
So is it a, is it a?
It's a vapor, it's an electronic cigarette that.
I know what it is.
Right.
I know what it is. I'm asking, is the word a word in the English language that we would find in a dictionary?
As of last week, I think so.
Urban dictionary. It's, it's the most, it's, it's crystal clear to folks what, what, yeah.
In the kids.
Urban dictionary, maybe. I don't know.
Jewel is a brand name.
Jewel is a brand, yes. So vape pipes, we felt was the, vape was the clearest way to do that. Ms. Hunt, did you have a question?
Do we write anything about the, the detectors that we added this year? And like what?
Do we highlight that in? Not in, not in the handbook.
No, not in the handbook.
No.
Because there was just a lot of questions about it this year, like what exactly happens or how are they notified it or are they listening in and that? I mean, we had all these crazy questions.
Smoke detector, yeah. It was pretty funny.
They're always gonna be there, those questions.
Yeah, we're actually doing a multi-part series on vaping. There's a video that's being produced. I was in part of it and there's consequences and it gets into all that. The principals, all four secondary schools were involved. We had PYDC involved, myself, so, and that will be posted online. It's like a three-part series and you can click on the various videos to see. Yeah, it's good. Well, well, once it's finalized, I can share that with you, but it's, it's looking really good.
The students even mentioned it at, at Pretty Day that, when they did the ABCs.
Yes, they, yes, yes.
They were pretty there at North Still.
I think at the, at the very least, it's.
As you know, you're in.
They're aware.
If.
Students are aware.
Yeah.
Yep. Regarding the use of, again, we're talking about consequences for penalties for the use of electronic cigarettes, cigarettes, tobacco, whatnot. Parent guarding conference required for each offense. That was something that was, felt collectively was important and it's been added as well. On page C23, actually, not C20, C30, in terms of reference to, oh, it is there, it just went out of order. Including reference to Patriot League bylaws before, it didn't have Patriot League mentioned. So we've, we've included that as well. And also into Scholastic Athletic Information Regulations and Schedule Section, change the reference from highschoolsports.net to MIAA.net. The preschool, we had a number of changes, not, nothing earth-shatterings, but more substantial, I guess, in terms of quantity. On page D1, both sessions are inclusive. That language was taken out. I mean, it's an inclusive, these were all recommendations from the principal of the program, of course. Added the number of days per week for the sessions, eliminated reference to the autism program. And PCE is one program meeting the various needs of all students and we do not need to highlight just the one group of students in the program. So we felt that it wasn't necessary to reference one group of students in a school that addresses a lot of needs in a very inclusive and effective way. It just was highlighting one population. So that was a recommendation of the principal there. The multiple disciplinary model, we removed the description of a clinical model and added parent trading description there. So that was a reference there. And G4, nutrition and health guidelines. We moved the nutrition section from page four and put it under snacks. Reworded part of clothing considerations and added appropriate footwear for play as well down below.
Can I ask you a question on the food snacks? I think it's great. And I see we wrote peanut butter and we always have this discussion about peanut butter. And now we're in a preschool and we're recommending it.
It's crossed out.
It's crossed out.
It's not the, no.
It's not up here.
It's crossed out on the bottom.
It's crossed out below.
Further down, it's crossed out.
But no, they put it.
We relocated it.
Yeah.
We relocated. Yeah.
On D4.
I see what you're saying. We don't, well, we don't discourage it. We don't, we don't sell it in our food services, correct? We don't distribute it in our food services. And I think it was more in concern of a cross-contamination and to eliminate that at the elementary. And we do have it at the other levels. And I think it was more about educating the students who have peanut allergies and creating safe systems and plays peanut-free classrooms, which we have at all levels. At the elementary, excuse me, and at the preschool, we, we do the same things if we need to at that level.
So what, what would we do if we had a preschool child allergic to peanut butter?
We would be handling it the same way that we did at the elementary level in terms of peanut, peanut-free zone, sometimes to the classrooms. We've had students said in the past at the preschool who have had the peanut allergies and the classroom was asked not to bring in peanut products. So we do.
Even though we're gonna have it on here, we, we'll teach as if they're aware that they have a student, they will tell.
Yes, and we, and that's been our practice at the preschool for many, many years. Actually, my daughter, my youngest, when she was in preschool, was in a classroom that had that request. So.
Thank you.
Welcome. In terms of homeschool communication, we added email that was not referenced before. In the tuition section, we changed week to break and changed the tuition sliding scale to tuition assistance. So that was all for the, excuse me, that's all for the appendix for the preschool. And then the last part is the main section. This applies to all levels. On page 16 of 70, medication administration. You all recall that we passed the medication guideline, the, the administration policy and it had some revisions there. Added information regarding the addition of short-term delegations for field trips in the, in the website, direct link from the health service page there. And again, one piece that will be added here that's in the policy but wasn't in the handbook was in agreement. So it has to be something that the, that the teachers, that everyone involved agrees to. It's not something that is being mandated on either the nurse or the, the teacher to, to administer that medication. But there's an agreement between the two parties in that regard. So that, that reference will be added there. And page 17, Communicable Disease Control, added a direct website link to the health service page. So instead of just the Plymouth Public Schools link, we'll add the direct link to the health service page. That will be a hyperlink that could be used for, when it's, when it's electronic. And then we, we were talking about this a little bit earlier and Dr. Sorensen, I think you mentioned that in terms of school-wide education service plans. So we added language that we actually put into place, I think a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken. Dictated, dictated by Master Nalar, whereby any student who is expelled or suspended from school for more than 10 days, consecutive days, whether in school or out of school, shall have an opportunity to receive educational services and make academic progress towards state and local requirements. So we've added the reference, the language regarding that school-wide education service plan that we will put in place with the collaboration in support of guidance. And those are all the recommended revisions that we have for the upcoming school year.
Questions, Ms. Badger?
I have a few, just questions or like additional edits. And I guess my question is, in the general section, and I, for some reason, don't have a page next to it. And it says, nine to 12, I think it must be in the school council section, grades nine to 12 are to discuss the handbook, but at their school council? Is there a reason why it's not something that's discussed in the middle of the elementary school?
Okay, because the students are involved in the council at the secondary level.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then on page nine, I didn't know if it was a good opportunity to put a little bit more in about the CPAC. Maybe that's a place we could just kind of enter some more language about the CPAC, give them some publicity like we were talking about at the, at our meeting with them. And on page 63, there's some weird bolding, which you'll probably.
Page nine, I'm sorry, page nine, you mentioned the CPAC. I wanna make sure that I'm clear.
Yes. I think it's just about, I think it just mentions like other parent organizations.
Other groups for parents.
Yes.
Is that a section?
Yes. And I just thought maybe we could put like another little section in there that's like, oh, CPACs, good for you.
We can certainly put something in.
But then, like I said, 63, there's just some weird bolding at the bottom of the page, if I can get there.
Weird bolding.
It just says, "Secondary school student name is bolded, but not under military requirements and institutions of higher education." So just unnecessary bolds.
Unnecessary, we'll take the unnecessary bold out. I'm not there yet, but.
That's fine. It's not it.
We will do, yeah.
I think that's it. And the, in the elementary section, I didn't know if it was possible, we're in, on A2, it says about the teachers having their meetings in, in early December, the, the conferences with parents. If we could put something along the lines and earlier than December if needed. I don't know. Because when you read it, it's like you can have your conference with your teacher.
Okay, so we will, in, in addition to referencing the scheduled conferences, say that at any time, parents may, parents, parents and guardians may call to request a conference with the teacher.
Yeah. I think that that would be helpful.
That's not a problem.
And that's in both of the.
I thought we had that there someplace, but I will check to make sure if you don't.
I did too, but when I read it, I didn't read it that way. Because I thought we had discussed it before.
But it doesn't outlook and if we don't, we'll make sure it's.
Thank you. And then also on A2, there's just, I think, I feel like we talked about this last year, but there's a, a period missing. There's, parents have a formal opportunity to meet with teachers during the month of December and March. Written report cards are issued in November, March, June for grades three through five. It just needs, between March and written, there needs to be a period. Otherwise, it's a really long sentence.
I see. Yep, I see where you are.
And then, and then in, in B3, and this is, this could be completely me just reading the sentence. There, it says, "Performance this year has a tremendous impact on high school students' future." I didn't know if we wrote, "Performance this year has a tremendous impact on the students' future in high school." Because I think what we're saying is that if you're in eighth grade, those classes and how you perform depends on whether you're in, whatever level you're in in ninth grade. But when I read it, it was like not quite saying that to me. So just suggestion. And, let's see, you already said that one. And then in C5, there's a, a one, like a random one on the start of a paragraph.
Okay.
And then there's, this, maybe this is in here as a way to reference, but, and maybe I missed it, but there's the 2018 credit requirements. There's still a column in there.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Ah, sorry. Uh, C5 on the high school. I think it's C5. I just lost it. I exit out, sorry.
Class of 2018.
Yeah. And I didn't know if we had it as a reference to, this is what it once was or if we needed to have it.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yep.
So we could remove that. And then this is just something like, for the graduation attire in the high school section, it, it mentioned shorts. And I, I don't know if it's something we wanna even bother putting in there because of the number of young people I saw in shorts. I mean, if we're gonna have a rule, but we don't follow it, I don't know if it's, if it's worth it. But that's my thoughts.
If they're dress shorts, it's not that.
Yeah, I think maybe dress shorts.
I would, just pure advice, I don't, you guys make the decisions. I think it, we make exceptions in case-by-case situations at the high school graduation, especially with needs of children and things like that. But I think the importance that it's a formal ceremony is important to keep in there. Because if it doesn't say that, they. they.
They'll all wear it.
Yeah, and there are specific cases with different situations, just from personal experience.
And that's what we were actually talking about, how the formality was being taken out of some of graduations, so.
Yeah.
It was just when I was reading, I was like, do we want to have this, or what? And then in the next, on C15, we have, on the student failures, it talks about South and North having that ability for the first and second. I didn't know if Harbor Academy had to be added into that, or if they just have their own, they don't, they don't have a first semester.
Harbor Academy falls under the high, they fall under each high schools because they're a program.
Perfect, I just knew there's different, there was a section for it, so I didn't know. And then in the preschool section, I had the same weird peanut butter question. And on D5, right in the "and" that you inserted there, there's a period right before it that just needs to be removed.
T5, I see it, yep.
And that's it.
Under the newsletter section.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other committee members with, if there are no other comments, we need a motion to accept these changes and corrections to the student handbook. Ms. Hunt?
I'll move that we accept the changes and corrections made to the handbook, taking into consideration any corrections we just made.
Is there a second to that? Mr. Morgan is the second. Are there any other questions to the motion? Okay, we'll take the vote then. And everybody has voted in favor. Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you.
So we have the end-of-the-year audit final report. Doctor, may I ask this?
Yes, Mr. Costin has an update for us regarding the end-of-year audit.
Mr. Costin.
Thank you. Each year, the school department is required to complete the financial end-of-the-year report. As you know, it's an extensive report that's used for, among other things, Chapter 70 calculations. As part of that process, we work cooperatively with town finance department to provide a number of figures in the areas that are paid really directly from the town. Those are primarily in the debt and insurance areas, benefits. The audit findings that I've included, there were two findings, they are in that category that were paid directly by the town. And the findings, I included the report and the actual amendment that was made to the, on April 30th, to the Department of Education. But the two findings were as followed. The MSBA progress payments, that were, they were reported as debt retirement, and the audit firm is requiring that they be submitted as a capital purchase, because the funds really weren't borrowed, even though they were borrowed short-term, they were not considered a debt retirement. And the Article IX funds that, every year that were fortunate enough to have approval for, for capital purchases, they were submitted as capital purchase for land and buildings. The audit firm is requiring that those purchases be classified as debt retirement. So we had to make a few changes. It doesn't affect any of the bottom line, it's just a matter of category and function code for the DESE. So those have been all submitted and accepted by the Department of Ed.
Okay, thank you for that report. Committee members, you have any questions about the audit report? Okay, thank you. Reports and proposals from committee members. The floor is open.
I think we all did the same thing.
Mr. Morgan.
Quite busy at the same stuff.
I was just going to comment one. I went to the String Spring Concert at PCIS, and they did a great job. I mean, just, the stage is full of cellos and violins and everything else, so it was well done there. Also, there's a fundraiser on Wednesday, June 5th, to support the students going to do Sushishigama Japan, it's a do-it-yourself serving trade fundraiser at Caby Shack, so something to consider. And that's all I have.
Ms. Badger?
I, I just wanted to know, if this is the place that we want to talk about graduation?
Sure.
I, I thought it was excellent. I, and we had just chatted amongst ourselves that there were a couple little tweaks, like at North, if they could put the speakers not directly behind us, so we can have hearing afterwards. But everything was wonderful. I mean, I really didn't, I thought everything was great, and I enjoyed having cells outside.
Yeah.
I went to the same concert that you all went to, but otherwise, we all went to graduation and awards ceremonies. It was kind of a group thing that we do, so. That's it.
And the reports and proposals.
Just echoing all the senior activities from class day or Pretty Day at North and the graduation, you know, I haven't stopped crying for a week, but it, you know, it was just amazing, and I think that we have an amazing group of kids this year, and it's very impressive and gives us so much hope, you know, with everything that's going on. It's just pretty amazing, so. So it was a good weekend.
Yeah.
A good week.
For sure.
Anything else? PYDC, is there a what?
No, not, there's, no.
How about building committee?
No. They're both coming up.
All right. Homeschool, we have one, I think? We have a homeschool plan tonight?
No, there's nothing on.
No, they're asked.
It was.
Yeah, getting there. So building, we have one. Dr. Sorensen, the members of the committee, we have one homeschool plan that has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it meets the guidelines set forth by this committee for approval.
Do I have a, do I have a motion? Ms. Burgess moves the recommendation seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a question? Okay, we'll take the vote. Everybody voted in favor, thank you. Accounts payable, Ms. Hunt?
All right. Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and the warrant for review, I move that the school committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S060619 dated June 6, 2019, in the amount of $685,313.28 as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Burgess is the second. Is there a question on that motion? Okay, please vote. Everybody voted in favor, thank you. We have only one set of minutes here, the minutes of April 1st. What's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Hunt?
I'm, I thought you said Ms. Bund. I move to accept the minutes from.
April 1st.
April 1st as presented.
We have a motion to accept the minutes of April 1st as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Selly is the second. Are there questions on that, on those minutes in that motion?
We all can, Michelle.
I don't see any hands, so we will take the vote.
I wasn't here.
We have everybody in voting in favor except for one abstention. Thank you very much. Before I adjourn the meeting, I'm going to ask the committee for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing a personnel matter.